Five meeting minutes. Do we have any discussion on those?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the September 16th meeting.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, Teri, okay, all right. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right. I'm going to hold my remarks to the end. And then with that, we will pass it over to Superintendent Kim Kraus for the superintendent report.
Thank you all, board members, for being here tonight. It's nice to see you all. I thought tonight is a good opportunity to share what we've been doing without having a board meeting last month. Before I dive into our reports, I thought maybe we could start out by sharing a spotlight of some of our students this evening. I asked that our junior NAD, our National Junior NAD members were able to join us. Nellie Caddy is here with us to represent the group. There were two other students who weren't able to be with us this evening. But Nellie, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and your group.
Hello, everyone. My name is Nellie Caddy, and I am a sophomore here at ISD. And I am a member of the Indiana Junior NAD Association. We went to a national conference in New Mexico, and I'm going to talk a bit about my experience at that conference. I was able to meet a lot of different people and participated in a lot of workshops. It was really a great experience, and I gained a lot of skills, leadership skills. Really, there are a lot of things that I learned that I will apply to school and as being secretary of the organization here at ISD. I was a member of the delegates, and we had 30 bills proposed, and we narrowed it down to 10. And then the final five bills were proposed to the National Association of the Deaf. One of those bills was about requiring improved captioning during videos. So we have sent that to NAD to hope that all movie theaters will include that. So I am hopeful to continue going. I know that I grew a lot from this particular experience personally and professionally.
Thank you, Nellie, for sharing. The National Association for the Deaf, that was hosted at New Mexico School for the Deaf, and various schools around the country sent representatives from their state. And so it was a great opportunity for them to learn parliamentary procedures, also being able to bring that back as a future leader in our community. Did the board, did you have any comments or questions for Nellie? I did want to just spotlight her and the other students that were able to attend in October to New Mexico.
Yeah, it was the 15th through the 19th.
Andy saying, I'm so glad that you were able to be a part of that. I was actually part of that back in 1985, if that tells you how old I am.
Wow.
But I'm happy to see that tradition continuing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming and sharing with us. We appreciate it and grateful that you had the opportunity to go and learn a bit more. Before the meeting, we were just having a conversation about learning how legislative works. And so I think you're ahead of the game already, just with those experiences. So thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Nellie. Everyone seeing me okay here? Just a good squat. Again, thank you for coming and representing your fellow classmates that were able to attend and for sharing your experiences. I'll start out with the superintendent's report. Here are a few of the things that I'd like to share today. We're going to discuss budget, which we'll do at every meeting from here on out, something I'm keeping a close eye on. Also talking about our staffing and personnel updates, enrollment, general updates about what has been going on in the past few months, and then also a discussion about our mentoring services, deaf mentors and school-age mentor services. I believe it was the August and September meetings we had discussed that. And so I have asked Kendall Gonzalez to come and to share a little bit about that because she's been the one mostly spearheading that work. So this is what I plan on speaking about. And again, board members, if you have any comments or questions, please feel free to ask. So this is not new information. This is an update for where we are with the fiscal year. Our expenditures, as we've already discussed previously. But I wanted to give an update of where we stand for this first quarter and then also including this last month up to October 31st. So you'll see two different sets of numbers for the quarter and then also additional numbers, including October. As you know, we are hoping to have it at about 25% per quarter. And you can see that we are right there, right on track. As I've mentioned before, I think one thing that can be difficult for staff to understand is how critical it is with the reduction of staff and the reduced operating appropriations that in the past, those cuts that were made were not enough to get us well below where we need to be. They were made just to get us right where we need to be. And so with all of the changes that have been made, we are right there where we need to be in that narrow margin. So just a snapshot of where we stand for the first quarter, our total expenses. And then you can see that almost all of those expenses went towards personnel. So payroll, benefits, overtime, insurance, short-term, long-term disability, all falls in that salary and benefits category. Our largest expense outside of personnel is utilities. Then we have contracts for occupational therapists and physical therapists. All of these are pretty much what we expected, no surprises here. And again, right on track for what we expected. You'll see the ID or the state billing cost. And what that is, is like IoT services, state personnel services they provide. And then you see these other smaller expenses. I just wanted to give you an idea of where we stand. And again, no big surprises here. It's absolutely where we expected to be. And again, with my staff continuing to monitor, we have had some resignations. And instead of going ahead and refilling those positions, we've decided to hold off and to reanalyze some of those positions. We are still focusing on safety and having that as a priority, as well as our academic programming. Here are a summary of the payroll numbers on a biweekly basis. Jeremy and I are monitoring it every two weeks. So every time the payroll comes out on that Wednesday, we need to review and see where we are. You'll notice some of these numbers here were prior to the layoffs, resignations, and retirements. So these were the numbers from the previous school year. These smaller numbers here were during the summer when our educational staff and our residential mentors were not working. This you will see is when everyone came back and the school year started, and we were in full force. We have had some recent resignations, and so we still don't have a good grasp of where the numbers will fall because they have been continuing to change. But this is just to give you an idea of what our biweekly payroll looks like. So here are the number of pay periods. July had three Wednesdays. December does as well. So the third and the fourth quarters, we will have fewer pay periods. So we'll see a drop in the expenses for payroll for those two quarters. Operating costs. If you recall, we fall about $2 million. And so with our personnel costs and then our operating costs, again, right on track. Again, no big surprises here. Every month, we'll see a steady increase on the total expenditures toward what our total allocations are. We have not seen any great cost savings as of yet, except for one area that will be upcoming. We're in the process of moving away from contractor services and having our own employees and having our own housekeeping staff. What we are spending for housekeeping and the quality of the service doesn't justify the expense. So this cost that you're seeing here is just for two housekeepers who are basically just cleaning the restrooms, and that's it. They're not doing the trash, they're not doing the floors. Many of our staff have really stepped up, and I can't say how much I appreciate them stepping up temporarily until we can get these housekeeping positions to be under our staff. So we'll see this cost go down, but we'll see personnel costs go up a little bit. Over the next six months, from January to June, we will have an increase in healthcare premiums. The state has made sure that employees are not seeing that increase in cost. However, as a state agency, we will see the increase in cost for health insurance premiums that are a benefit to our employees, which is great for our employees. But at the same time, that also comes from our budget. So that's something that we need to closely monitor. As I mentioned, we're already just kind of right there. So with this additional cost, that's something that we need to be mindful of. And that's also another reason why we are reassessing whether or not to replace some of those vacancies that are left by people who resigned. So for the full year, it will cost us $250,000. This up here is how much it will cost just for those six months. Another benefit that the state offers to state employees is the ability to receive tuition reimbursement. So if employees take classes for continuing education, they can be reimbursed for up to $5,250 per calendar year. And that was something that we had elected to suspend temporarily. But the state informed us that that was not something that we could suspend. So we've brought that back for our employees. And there is a potential impact of $50,000. In the past few years, that expense has varied greatly. Some years it's 20,000, some years it's 50,000, sometimes it's 5,000. So we're prepared for the greatest impact of what we've seen previously, which is 50,000. And as I mentioned previously, we have lost our speech therapist. The positions have been posted, and we're continuing that search. But at the same time, in the meantime, we're investigating contract services. And so there are the potential costs for that as well. So here are the expenditures up through the first quarter and October. Again, right on track for what we expected. We also have these additional funds, if you recall from previous meetings that we've discussed, that we are keeping in reserve in the event that we might be over our allocations by 50 or $100,000. We do have these reserve funds that we can fall back on. Again, trying to not use any of these funds and to stay within our appropriations and have this to fall back on if necessary. And I want to be mindful of not going forward with additional hiring without having a better grasp of where we stand. You'll notice that there is a small increase in the donated funds. For example, ICASE has a director's meeting or a conference that they host regularly. And if, instead of them going out and searching for interpreters, if we have coverage and time, they can pay our interpreters to go, and we bill them for that cost, and then we deposit it into the donations fund. So we have less interpreters, so we won't be doing that very much anymore for the time being. But when the opportunity presents itself, then that's where we have seen an increase in that donated funds. And then Medicaid billing, it's still too early to tell because it always falls a quarter behind. So by February's board meeting, we should see more accurate numbers for what was built for the first quarter. And you can see here, we started out the year with $150,000 for preventive maintenance. And we're continuing to monitor that. HVAC costs and contractors is where we're spending most of that funds for some of those repairs that we're not able to handle in-house because we don't have the skill set within our staff. So that's where those expenses are coming from. I am continuing to be in communication with the education vertical and sharing these updates. Hopefully, with time, we can see an increase in funding at the next session. But we're working with what we have, and we're staying within our means and continuing to communicate. This is just additional information about our personnel. We have a total of 201 employees, 167 full-time, 34 intermittent. Most of those are paraprofessionals, residential advisors, cafeteria workers, those that work a partial day, also athletics, our equipment manager, those types of positions. Here's a list of some of our vacancies. We were fortunately able to fill the interpreting positions, they're in process, campus police positions. So we are working on these vacancies that are listed here. I've been working very closely with the state personnel department about the current vacancies and the budgetary impact statement, whether or not we can fill those positions or not, and how we are able to do that. It's not as easy as just making a quick decision about replacing a position. Wanting to make sure that we're not over budget.
Kim, if we do not fill the positions right away, we do not have to remove them. Do we, we can keep those positions vacant in hopes that our budget's restored a bit?
That's a good question, Kelly. How the state has things set now, if you don't fill the position within 90 days, the position becomes inactive. And then we would have to go from scratch to request the position. So that doesn't mean that it's gone forever, it just means that it's not active. In the past, we could request a position and put it on the hold. But now the new procedure is if it's more than 90 days, then it becomes inactive. And if you'd like to reactivate it, then you have to go all the way back to the beginning and requesting the position. So yes and no. They did let me know that I would be able to get those positions back. I would just have to go through additional steps to get the positions back again. Any other questions about the budget before I move on? So just to recap of where we are with enrollment, I think we ended the year in June with 240, sorry, 348 students. I've been here 15 years, and in those 15 years, the numbers really do fluctuate anywhere between 310 and 350. For us, this is a good, healthy number. We have less teachers than we had last year, so that actually works out in our favor. If we had 350 students, we might not have the staffing to support them. So with these enrollment numbers and our current personnel, we're managing well. Here are the numbers of enrollment per grade level. We're averaging 15 to 20 per cohort. Some of these are smaller numbers. We do tend to get students later in third grade and up. Sometimes once students start to struggle, then they end up coming to us. And unfortunately, sometimes that feels like a missed opportunity. We would love to get the students much earlier. But here's an idea of where we are per grade level. I wanted to share with the board the website for the co-location. This is public information that you can access at any time. They will be sharing more pictures here soon to give updates. So this is where all of the official information from the governor's office and IDOA can be found for the co-location. There are approximately 50% through the design process, is what we've been told. Some buildings are already in process, but construction is moving along. The expected move date is 2028. So for the 2028 school year, I don't have a lot of additional updates for you, but I did want to share the website with you.
I just want to say, Kim has done a phenomenal job of really keeping the line of communication open with ISBBI. She meets with them weekly to talk about the transition, the co-location, and that kind of a thing. So I want to, I just want to say that we are being well represented.
Thank you. So out of the blue, we were contacted about a $5,000 donation from Micro Center. Apparently, someone in the Noblesville area found out about our budget challenges, and they nominated us for this donation. Later this week, I'll be going to place our order. Very exciting and unexpected. So here's a list of the equipment that we'll be getting from that donation that we'll be able to use for our students and classrooms. A three-day printer, a laser cutter, an engraver, video conferencing equipment that we'll use for our case conference and IEP team. Once we receive the equipment, we'll be getting it in early December. We will share that on our social media and recognize them. I'll be meeting with them on Thursday. We still don't know who it was that nominated us. I plan to ask, but also a very nice surprise. So a nice early Christmas gift to our IT team to go shopping, free $5,000 to see what the students would need, and also some additional technology needs like cables. So very excited about this. So any donations are more than welcome. I think it's important for everyone to know what the superintendent's office is doing. There are a lot of small things, but here are some of the bigger pieces that I'm utilizing my time with. Communicating with the Department of Education. We were able to host the ASL standards meeting here at ISD, collaborating with the Department of Education. We were invited to the nickel plate trail ribbon cutting ceremony on 62nd Street because the trail runs here in front of the school. So being able to meet some of the people there, Josh Smith was there. It was nice to touch base with him and other members of the community. I have been meeting regularly with James Michaels from ISBBI, really biweekly. We've been having meetings in addition to co-location, having additional conversations, looking ahead to when we do move and what our individual budgets will look like, as well as potential shared services. For example, utility bills, what will that look like and how will that be handled? And so we're starting some of those early discussions to see where we might have separate budgets for those different expenses. And working on building that relationship. So it's been very productive and positive so far. We wanted to get off on the right foot and start those conversations now. ISD also had some that were able to attend the ICASE Fall Conference in October, including myself. Co-location meetings are happening weekly. In the past, they might have been once a month, but we are having weekly meetings equal to one and a half days per week. So we might meet Monday morning, Wednesday afternoon. So several buildings that we are working on all at the same time. So sometimes having to really shift our thought. One minute we're talking about facilities, and then another minute we're talking about the equipment in another building. So having those regular meetings also with the education vertical. Governor Braun separated those eight different cabinets. We fall under the education vertical. Each vertical has their own legislative representative, CFO, and attorney. And so multiple discussions with different members from the vertical, helping them to know us and to understand our needs and our challenges, and keeping that line of communication open with them. And they seem very supportive, so we're continuing those conversations. CEASD is an organization for deaf school administrators and programs around the country. So I'm a member of that organization and also a member of their board. So I take part of accreditations, which helps me to bring things back to our school, as well as being involved with strategic planning that I'm able to also bring back to ISD. Will be due for our accreditation here soon. And so we'll talk more about that at our February board meeting. We are up for both accreditations, both CEASD and Cognia. So just a little bit about where most of my time is going. So here are a few things in addition to the many other things that I'm involved in. This afternoon, we had a supervisors' meeting, all of our supervisors, school-wide, and I'm trying to do that monthly. Sometimes we're seeing things that are inconsistent between departments. And so having an opportunity to get all of our supervisors together to work together, and that's a work in progress. Okay, are we ready for a new topic? I thought we could take this opportunity to I thought we could take this opportunity to discuss the deaf mentor services that were previously under the Center for Deaf and Hard of Hearing Education. We have an MOU with them to be able to provide these services at no cost to us. We'll be acting as a pass-through from the center, and there's no budgetary impact to us. And we also previously discussed the school age mentor program. Kendall will talk more on that. I will let her take it away. As a reminder, Kendall is our family engagement specialist. So she is continuing with those duties, as well as deaf mentor programming and SANS. So I'll let her take over for here.
I think we need something to share, so if you could go ahead. Thank you, Kim. I'm just checking in with the IT to see, technology-wise, where I need to stand. Kim's asking our technology specialists in the back there to make sure that we're all in a good spot for the livestream. And then Kyle, if you could let me know, and Peter, if I need to move as well, I will.
Hi, everybody. I'm Kendall Gonzalez, I'm the family engagement specialist with Kim's family. Thank you, Susan and Kim. I'm just, I'm looking forward to sharing some updates. I've been really enjoying the changes that have happened this summer and looking forward to all that we're getting for our families, as well as the deaf mentors for the school age mentor programs. Just to start with a little bit of background with the deaf mentor program and school age mentor program. All of the services for both programs were previously provided by the Center for Deaf and Hard of Hearing Education. And with the new changes, we're able to provide those now under ISD. And a part of that change, too, previously, our teachers were not able to, or any of our staff, were not able to be deaf mentors. Working for both agencies was not allowed, so now that barrier no longer exists. So our teachers can also be deaf mentors, which is an exciting thing. The biggest, I'll explain more as we go through the presentation, but the biggest difference between a deaf mentor is a deaf mentor is a provider for zero to three as a part of the early intervention program. And school age mentors are three and up through school age, three to twenty-two. And I'll share more about what these services might look like. This is a map for Indiana First Steps. And First Steps provides early intervention services, PTOT, speech, all kinds of services for children and babies who are newborn to three. They work with the families and providing developmental support to make sure that children are where they should be and reaching the milestones that are expected for that age. So being a part of the Center for Deaf and Hard of Hearing Network, we are a First Steps agency, working with them and providing the services that we're able to. You can see there's nine clusters across the state, and we are providing deaf mentors for all of those clusters throughout the state. This really goes into the CDHHG network and what that means and who's a part of it. ISD has not been a part of the network before, and we are now, which is really exciting. So you can see we have St. Joseph's Hearing and Speech, First Steps, the CDHHG, and now ISD is also at the table, a part of this network, providing services from birth to three. The other services that are provided by the entire network is audiology and assistive technology, as well as family navigation. Those are housed within the center. And a family navigator, in case you don't know who they are, they provide the spectrum of knowledge and services in helping a family navigate all of the systems that they might face with a deaf or hard of hearing baby. They are the experts on everything, ASL, cochlear implants, hearing aids. They play a vital role in transitioning the zero to three when they transition into preschool. So they play a vital role for the families navigating this really confusing world of deaf and hard of hearing supports and systems of people, and who does what, and who is that again? They really play a key role for families. Listening and spoken language is provided by St. Joe's. And then we provide deaf mentors, which is American Sign Language and visual language. Deaf mentors not only are providing ASL support, they also share a lot of their experience as a deaf adult. And they share about deaf culture, expectations, what they've been through, what their child might go through. So it's really important to have that for the families. I thought I was forgetting something, but I think that's it.
Kendall, if I could add. Ready to move over? Just to add what Kendall had shared already. Having those deaf mentor services and being part of these other organizations. From time to time, we get families who come to us much later, and they didn't even know we were an option. Some do, some never knew about us. So for those families that have First Steps or whatever services, whatever options they as a family decide to go with, then we are still there and we're presented as one of the options. And so that's one of the great things about us being able to be here now. Previously, it was just St. Joe's and the Center for Deaf and Hard of Hearing Education. But being able to be there from the beginning is really nice, and we were just added this past summer. So I just wanted to add that, that it helps us to get that recognition and for families to know about us.
Kim reminded me of something else. Something about First Steps in general and early intervention in the state is that it's parent choice. So the family navigator helps explain all of these options, and then the family gets to choose which services they want, which could be almost nothing to everything that they might qualify for. We really hit the ground running this summer. The summer was unexpected and exciting to have all these changes. We're really close with different staff and team members from the center. And they have a whole team working on different parts to each deaf mentor program and the school age mentor program. So really, sitting down with different people and people and learning what they did and how they do it, and then taking that and making it fit for ISD is really what I did this summer with both of the programs. Natalie Hendricks-Evans is a deaf mentor coordinator for the state. She has contracted with the center for several years now, and she came with the program. So it's been really nice to have her to work alongside in the transition process. So that hasn't changed. She's still a contract broker for us. We did work through the deaf mentor handbook and made a lot of revisions. Anytime there's a change in a program, it's an opportunity to make sure, do these processes and procedures still work? Do we still want to do this? Do we need a backup? What's missing? And what can we do to improve to make sure that we're doing the best that we can? So we did that this summer. We established, this is new, we've worked with the center for years. We know them well. But having this specific role between us and them has created an opportunity for new procedures and for us to work closer with this project specifically. Then we also, this also not only impacts our relationship with the center, but it also impacts internally, what are we doing now? So Jeremy, Kim and I have figured out some procedures that's going to work and house for us. And we have new policies and procedures, along with the handbook, that we've just fine-tuned to make sure that families are doing what we can and making sure that we're doing the best that we can for the families that we're now serving. A big piece, too, is recruitment and preparing for a training. I'll show you some numbers soon, but we spent some time on that this summer. In the conversations at the beginning of this summer, we did have twelve deaf mentors that came with the program. Very quickly, we went down a few. It happens, there was no consistency, and just people, lives change, they need to make change, something else happens. So we dropped to nine, and then we did have a training. So we have fifteen deaf mentors now. The exciting number on the board is six of those fifteen are ISD teachers. And I'm also working with a company that we contract with, and we are onboarding seven more deaf mentors. So by the end of this month, we should have around twenty-two deaf mentors. We still need more, though. So again, serving birth to three across the state, we need to focus on improvement. There's different areas. We have part of you in Indianapolis always. This is a pattern. And we have a lot of families up in northwest Indiana that need more deaf mentors. We have one deaf mentor in the northwest area who has a caseload that's very large. So it'd be nice for her if we could share that a little bit more. So we have, the most recent numbers that we've seen for our deaf mentor families, we're serving fifty-two families across the state right now. And five of our six ISD teachers have active caseloads, and they are excited. A little bit about the ISD teachers that we currently have working for us as deaf mentors. Three of them come with experience.
Say that again.
Three of our ISD teachers come with experience as deaf mentors. And so they were previously deaf mentors and are able to continue. So at the moment that this was announced in August, they jumped at the chance, and they have been begging for the first, and ready to start. I've had to pump the brakes, so there's that process we have to follow. So it's really fun to see their excitement. It's, it's really exciting to see. And then the deaf mentor training. The Sky High Curriculum is a national curriculum that is used across the country for deaf mentors. And it's a three-day training. No ifs, ands, or buts about it. It's a three-day training. And Laura Berkloo and Natalie Hendricks-Evans are trainers with that program. Laura is, she works at the CDHHG, she's the early intervention lead, team lead, and she's a national trainer. And then Laura is, Natalie can train for the state of Indiana. So during those three days, we had thirteen attendees being trained to be deaf mentors. And even some from the community came with experience. So it's nice, they came with experience from other states. So they're learning Indiana's ways, a little bit different. Early intervention in the state of Indiana is zero to three. Some states are zero to five. Hopefully, as we recruit more deaf mentors from ISD, we still need more teachers to sign up, hopefully. And out in the community, we will be able to host another training when there's a need for it. I recently went to Fort Wayne. There was a deaf jam festival in Fort Wayne, so I was there recruiting deaf mentors. Andy was there.
I saw you there.
And I got a couple people's names on the list that I've never met before, so it's a win. And we'll be recruiting actively at ISD throughout the school year. And then I'm really looking to that northwest Indiana corner, hoping to work with IAD, their outreach people, and make some connections while in Fort Wayne, you can as well, so we can reach northern Indiana and southern Indiana. We have some families, and we don't have enough providers in southern Indiana to be there.
Two thoughts. When we talk about ISD teachers being deaf mentors, I want to make it clear that they are providing services in the evening and weekends, not during work time. And that is allowable. They are salaried employees, so that maintains stable. And then they get paid an hourly rate for their deaf mentor services that they provide. Other employee categories do not qualify. Our paraprofessionals, due to their classification of being hourly employees, does not allow for them to do this particular position because of the overtime that they are eligible for. So there are only specific categories that can be employees of ISD and also do deaf mentor services. So once we receive this program and start working on it, we are adapting it and improving the services, and we have better quality control over what is being provided, making sure that we have experienced individuals and qualified individuals doing the work. Not that they haven't been, but just being more actively involved in what's provided and hopefully increasing the numbers that are offered, and really standardizing those expectations for those deaf mentors. Kendall, I know a lot of the speech therapists have taken advantage of virtual opportunities for therapy. Are we able to do some, I mean, I know it's not ideal, but for some of those areas that struggle to get staffing, are we able to do virtual opportunities?
Yes. So a lot of the services, again, it's parent choice. We try to go in home as much as possible. That is definitely the preferred method. However, some families prefer virtual or providers, especially, they've had a limited amount of providers. We've been down to the state. So we have providers up north serving families down south virtually. Just because of the, we don't have enough bodies to be everywhere.
This is Andy. I really am appreciating your presentation. Could you talk about the criteria that people need to meet to qualify as deaf mentors? You know, I know deaf individuals all across the state, and that's potentially an area that I could support you in.
I am happy to share that with you, Andy, and I can share the flyers that I have too. Do you want me to share now about qualifications? I have two different groups of qualifications. The main difference for ISD staff is it's ISD teachers. And then for the community, there could be some changes on that horizon. Right now, we can work with people without a degree. That's probably going to be changing soon. Where a degree will be required, deaf adult, bilingual, ASL, and English, those are the basic requirements. Hopefully with some experience with working with young children and families. But we can work with that. If somebody doesn't have experience, then we, of course, go through the Sky High Training, which is very rigorous training. And then Natalie and I will help support them throughout, learn the services. And I'll double check to make sure I'm not missing anything.
Okay.
I wanted to go back to this number. I wanted to add something. So there's fifty-two families who are receiving deaf mentor services. That's not all of the families in the CDHHG network who could be receiving deaf mentor services. There are over two hundred children within the network that receive a variety of services, audiology or LSL, the listening spoken language, or deaf mentor. So this is a number that Kim and I are tracking closely, and we want to see some growth with that number. With taking on these, yes.
Thank you, sir, for interrupting. Maybe you're getting to this, but can you talk about funding and reimbursement? And particularly the intersection of First Steps as far as reimbursement? Is it, and I'll add to that, is the physician or other provider determines the, what is it, IFSP? The Individualized Family Support Plan for First Steps. So is deaf mentor services included in the IFSP?
Yes, so the IFSP is the Individualized Family Service Plan. And deaf mentor, the deaf mentor service is not a service on the IFSP or a First Step service. It's why we're working with this third party, the CDHHG Network. Don't know of a better way to explain that. It's because it's not an actual service within First Steps. So the reimbursement, Kim had mentioned in the beginning, there is a pot of money that the CDHHG gets, and then we will build the CDHHG to be reimbursed by them. It's a hundred and ten thousand-ish or so, give or take. So Jeremy kept me there watching closely the numbers to make sure that the services are Kim, make sure that the services we're providing will be reimbursed.
And that number was set by the Center for Deaf and Hard of Hearing Education. And from our discussions, they've said that they have always had a surplus of funds at the end of the year. They have never exceeded that allotted amount. So that is the budget they have allotted. Ninety percent of that is direct services. Ten percent of that is administrative services, handling paperwork, referrals, et cetera. And again, that money is provided through the center.
Did I get all of your questions answered? So now that we are overseeing the program, the deaf mentor program, some other additional things that are required that we're participating in is the CDH Network meetings. So again, the group with St. Joe, the CDH, and ISD. Now, Kim and I are joining these meetings. And we're working on a variety of projects right now, which I think is going to really help the entire network and our program and making sure that the families have a better understanding of what the services are and what's being offered. Another meeting that I'm participating in monthly is the Deaf Mentor Coordinators Meeting. That meeting is for deaf mentor coordinators from across the country. I've attended a few this fall and it's been really beneficial to learn from other schools and programs to see what they're doing, what their challenges are. We often have a lot of the same challenges. Nobody has enough deaf mentors, it seems, right now across the country. So it's good to sit in like company and to understand what other people are going through and how we can improve together. And also take away little nuggets and learn from what they're doing as well. Something else that we are doing with our Indiana deaf mentors, we meet twice a month for trainings and for opportunities to get together, make sure they're supported, that they have what they need so they can go into family cell, so they keep providing the services. And then just to make sure that we're all on the same page and where can we improve. It's constant. There is something constantly that we are working on within this group. So those meetings are really first book. Along with just training new people, we have thirteen, potentially still thirteen new deaf mentors. So it's a lot of hands-on training with them to make sure they're comfortable with the paperwork, what's expected and thing else. So jumping from the deaf mentor program to the school-aged mentor program. The school-aged mentor, again, I said it's school age, three to up to twenty-two. A deaf adult would go into, the services look a variety of ways for school-aged mentors. So a deaf adult could either provide services at home with the family, supporting their language acquisition and growth between the family and the student at their house. Kind of a continuation of the deaf mentor concept. Or it could be completely different. And the deaf adult would go into a mainstream program and go into the school and working with the student, the deaf student and the student's peers on advocacy, social interactions, possibly how to use an interpreter. It's not natural for deaf children to know how to use an interpreter. And sometimes they need a little bit of help in knowing where their eyes need to be and navigating. Teacher, peers, interpreter, where should I be looking right now? So the school-aged mentor can go in and provide consultation to the classroom, the teacher, make sure that the student is fit into the environment that they're in. They could also work on language for the student, just making sure that the overall student is doing well in that environment. So those services vary.
And I was just checking in with the IT staff on placement again. So CM Services, School Age Mentor Services, we are able to offer that to our public schools. And the center has been referring us. It's where we were headed. We were moving forward on that track. And we had a contract that we brought to the vertical that we were going to bring, you know, this income in from these school-aged mentor services. And I was given the information I needed to hit the pause button because of our Indiana code. Prior to 2012, when the center was not in existence, ISD was responsible for the duties that lie within the center and what ISD has. After 2012, some of those duties were carved out and given to the center. And so no longer are housed in our code. And one of our duties is to be a residential and day school program for students. And so at this time, I'm going to have to look at the Indiana code and work with the vertical for legislative change. I have been communicating with Bethany Colston, the Director of the Center for Deaf and Hard of Hearing Education, ensuring that this is not a duplication of services on their end. And she clearly stated that it was not. But I have had to hit the pause button due to the way our code is laid out. So we do need an adjustment to that so that we can provide those services to the public school. It won't be a duplication. But many schools do need the support from us. And because of the code, we are unable to provide that support at this time. This is the center's code as written. And in the spring, there was revision to their code. Fortunately, there is still there were changes to the code. A new bill was passed, but the code was not changed. And so the center may not provide direct therapy services. And we're looking at the school-aged mentor piece. This is an area of need that the school districts require. The center is not covering this anymore. And it is within our scope of work. But it is not laid out there any longer. So I'm currently working with the vertical. And I will be meeting with them again this week. I met with them a couple of weeks ago and they agreed and saw the need for some adjustments. So we are working together. I'm hoping to meet with them this week to see what our next steps are. And I'll be meeting with Bethany later this week as well and communicating with the key stakeholders. Again, just emphasizing, there's no duplication of services here. It's just an optional service that needs to be provided as public schools use this support. And that is where I hit a bit of a brick wall in our progression on these school-aged mentor services and had to take a step back. As I get more information, I'll be sure to communicate with the board and provide an update. I should get something in the next couple of weeks and I will definitely keep you in the loop. Any questions?
Kim, when you were saying that schools, you've got ten schools requesting services, are you getting requests from charter schools? They are public schools, but typically they don't have teachers licensed or anything like that for students that are deaf and hard of hearing.
We have received one of those requests from a charter school. So there's definitely a need for a school-aged mentor to go into the local schools across the state. The schools were screaming in July. They were ready for services to start because they were rolling over from last year's IEP and then they transferred the services to ISD. And so they were calling and ready to go. And I was begging them, please, please be patient. We're working through this, we're figuring this out. So we were going full steam ahead with both programs and we were ready to start the services. We had services planned for Monday and found out that Friday we needed to push pause. So a lot of phone calls and making sure that families understood what was happening. That I've talked to parents, I've talked to special underdirector, making sure that we all knew what was going on. And everybody's been really understanding and really patient throughout this process. I'm very thankful for how they all have responded. It's out of our hands and they've been really understanding with that. But these students still need services and they're not getting them. So it hurts that they're not getting them. Hopefully, we'll be able to in the future. In the meantime, I've been trying to support these local schools, encouraging them to contract directly with deaf adults, sending some recommendations. That's also a little bit painful because it means we're talking to people that we believe in and that we could use here for something. And we're sharing them. So it's worth it, it's worth the students. And still receiving requests yesterday. I had a new request come through my email and have a meeting later this week to talk to them about what's going on. Anything about school-aged mentors? Look, will we switch gears?
As I mentioned when I spoke with you earlier, it is critical that we provide these services. The schools need support and we have the ability to do that. And the center is not providing that at this time. So that is an area where we need to make movement and hoping to continue to work with the vertical to make this happen. So I do need your support as well. And when that time comes, I'll be sure to reach out for that.
While here, just wanted to share a little bit of updates with family engagement. This fall, I'm not sure where it went. It's gone by very quickly. And so I'm still working closely with new families, ensuring that they have a smooth transition into ISD and making connections with the staff here, that they're competent and I know who they can contact when they need something and helping to bridge that gap. Sometimes that does exist unfortunately. And also making sure that they're connected to other families. One way that we're making sure that our new families are connected to other families is with the Family Ambassador Program. Last year was the first season of having the Family Ambassador Program. And this year, the numbers are completely different. I have recruited more family ambassadors, which is exciting. So I have extra adults. Last year, I didn't have enough family ambassadors. This year, I have plenty. But the families aren't really wanting a family ambassador. I've been offering this as an optional program. If you want to have a veteran family who knows about ISD, they can come alongside you. And I prefer my privacy, thank you very much. But I don't want to share my contact information. I don't want somebody else reading out. So I'm already thinking to next year and what we're going to do to make this look different. So really benefit our families. It was an unexpected challenge this year. We've provided some family education, social events and opportunities for our families. So every year, we're tweaking what we're doing. We're paying attention to what's happening, how the families are responding, what staff are seeing. And we're closely with the staff to make sure what they're seeing and what we're providing also makes sense for our families. I've been sending out family surveys, seeing what families, what they're wanting to see happen and what they're involved in. There are some patterns. Last year, I shared some patterns. Those patterns are continuing this year, even though we've made some changes. So when we're offering different events and workshops, this year, we tried a toddler ECE series. There's about two families that have been coming to those workshops. Two is better than zero. It's so benefiting, it's so benefiting the two that have come. But we're looking at that. This will not happen in the spring, how it's been happening right now. And then the ASL workshops. Last year, we started providing ASL workshops for our families. We also did something else different last year with our giveaways that we're not doing this year. We've had about the same four families that are coming to the workshops. We did change the time in hopes that it would allow more families to come. But it's been about the same number as last year too. So even with a little tweak, it didn't really have the impact that I was hoping for. Families beg for ASL workshops, but they're not coming. So we have to figure that out. This summer, right before school started, we had a back-to-school event. We had about twenty-five families come, just a good number. That ended up being around sixty-five attendees in total gained. We had popsicles and played at our playground and the kids loved it. The families loved it. It was a good event. We recently hosted a Deaf Plus Parent Chat for our families whose kids have additional eligibility on their IEPs along with deaf and hard of hearing. The families showed up. They had a lot to share, a lot of opinions and ideas and thoughts. It was really beneficial to meet with them. We also had our annual Donuts with Dear Ones event. This has been a long event here at ISD. And we added a technology workshop, a little tweak. From last year in the spring, we did a muffin event with technology. We separated spaces. After the muffin event, the parents ran out of the door. So we made a little tweak this year and we had it in the same space. We got a few more parents. I think I might have guilted a few more with making eye contact and saying, hey, you're staying, right? And a few extra stayed. And I don't think they were intending to, but it was great to have them. And they really enjoyed the workshop. The feedback was great, the participation was great. It was good information that was shared about balancing technology and how do we do that in our families. So we had thirty-one families for the donut event, which was over a hundred attendees, which is about, whenever we have donuts, muffins, or ice cream, there's over a hundred attendees for those events. Without food, we see the four, the handful of families that show up when there was not food involved. About ten families stayed after for the technology workshop and they're asking for that to be provided again. So it really was a hit. And last spring as well, the families were like, please offer that again, such good information. Another event that the families love, we tried last year for the first time, one of our staff members is a professional baker on the side. She's super talented. And so she loves doing this event for her families. And it's kind of like a painting with a canvas, but we decorate cookies step by step with her. And we had twenty-one families come, which was about sixty-five attendees in total. So it was a good event. Something else we're doing in a couple of weeks, we're hosting an international family chat, a virtual, it's a virtual event for those families just to see how we can better connect with them and make sure that they feel connected to ISD and they knew, they know who we are. If they have questions, it's an opportunity to provide space for them to connect with the school and make sure that we are serving them well.
I do want to thank Kendall. She has been working diligently with deaf mentor services, school-aged mentor services. When we face this change in approach and what we need to do with school-aged mentors, she reached right out to connect with the schools, with the families. And I really just can't emphasize enough the work that she's done. And as you can see with the events we've hosted, food draws the families in, as do the hands-on activities. And that cookie event, we can see that the families really are taking that time to interact and engage with one another and connect because it's not a presentation, it's an opportunity to connect. And food does cost money, so we're always tracking that and being creative with the funds that we have. But we've looked at a variety of options at workshops that we can offer and how we can offer them. The SL programs, virtual evening times, trying to combine all those things that draw people in. And just making sure that families feel that sense of belonging to the school. That's what the point of these activities are. And maybe it's not to present a workshop. That may not be how we get them engaged. Anything else you'd like to add, Kendall? Any questions?
Kim, I know, you know, food attracts. And I know it can be pricey, but this would be an excellent source to use your Medicaid dollars. It would be an excellent source. You could provide a little bit of something for everybody and it's not going to put a big dent in those dollars for you. But it would be so worth. But it would be so worthwhile to get more people attending.
I agree. Yes, that's a good suggestion. I'll absolutely look into that.
And it doesn't hurt to ask for sponsors. I have not been asked about sponsorship on this. There are many organizations that might be willing to provide that kind of financial assistance.
Absolutely. Kendall? You can work on that, right?
Kendall's saying, I'll keep that in mind.
I appreciate that, Andy. Absolutely. We've had a year to review this and this is the second year going in with family engagement. So it's nice to see what's drawing the families in and really identify that using different avenues such as Medicaid funding and sponsorships is a good idea and a way to minimize our cost. Any further questions for Kendall? Thank you, Kendall. I believe I've reviewed everything I wanted to cover this evening for the superintendent's report. Any further questions for me before I include? Okay.
All right, we have no new business. We have no public comments. Board comments, does anyone have anything they would like to share or add? Teri?
Yeah, I wanted to call attention, Kim, that I do appreciate how you went through the money and I know how mindful you are of keeping track of that. And it really made sense to me, which is really hard because I'm not a financial person. So I want to thank you, Kim, for taking that extra time to do that.
Kim has done a phenomenal job of really diving in and taking a look at the budget. I would say almost daily that she and Jeremy are continually looking at the budget, dissecting the budget, finding out where they can get the most bang for their buck for everything. So I think there's a lot of things that she's still learning. But I think, and there's things that I think she, she and I talked about that there's a lot of things to be uncovered still, but she's doing a phenomenal job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Representative Claire?
That's an interesting word, uncovered. Tell me more.
I think that there were, well, to just, I mean, I, I don't mind if, I hope it's okay if I share athletics. You know, it's been a lump sum, but what are we spending and where are we spending it? And so I think there's, there's some opportunities to really dive in and find out where, where things are really being spent and, and how much, and what kind of budgeting was done. And are we sticking with those budgets? Kim might want to explain. Go forth.
Sure. I've been monitoring the budget diligently. And I think it's so critical that I understand how we're looking at, how we operate our athletics programs. For example, football. How much does it cost for us to run that season, the basketball season, the track season? What's included in that, officials, concessions, et cetera? I really want a clearer picture of what the budget is so that I know that if it's impacting our general fund or it doesn't usually impact that, it's a different fund. But if we host a weekend tournament, what does that cost us? We have to open the dormitory, we have to open the cafeteria. So really being intentional about the vegetarian planning. And I think prior to this, it was very status quo. And I'm not looking to reduce any of our athletics teams. I just want to really take a fine tooth comb and see where those funds are going. And look to see if there are efficiencies to take advantage of. There may not be. Also, another area is overtime. Employees that are working overtime, obviously, it costs a lot of money. Last year, we spent $500, $600,000 on overtime. So that's an additional cost savings by assessing this budget regularly to see where those costs are going and how we can manage them. So I'm just still navigating that. And the goal is that I will have a very clear picture of where that 17.4 million goes and what it costs to run each and every program that is housed within that budget. And I don't think that, I had that clear picture before. So this year will give me that opportunity. In athletics, there's been a high volume of turnover. So I don't know that it was all very clear cut, if that explains it a bit more.
Any other comments or questions? I just, I want to thank Marie, who has stepped in tonight to take notes for us. Melissa is interpreting for us tonight. So I want to thank her for stepping in and doing that for us tonight. Again, I want to thank the technology people for, the staff for providing the technology and the live stream. We appreciate that. And so we just appreciate the staff that comes and helps us throughout this evening. So thank you all. And with that, I will adjourn at 6:16. Thank you all.